Oh, not yet.
I've always met them at the parade.
Testing. Yeah.
Some landmarks are in our backyard. They're just little landmarks. Last year we were here because we were on the field.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? No, can't hear us. Sorry, we're trying to get Dr. Perry on the line. Yeah. What if it goes to YouTube?
It's cold in here. And I got this short sleeve for her.
How about just go to YouTube, Debbie?
YouTube Live, yeah.
YouTube Live?
Yeah.
Might just be able to go right through YouTube. At least listen and call in.
Well, that's what I'm planning on.
Yeah.
I know, he being late. We could limit it. It's something like Perry. What is it? I'm not sure.
Oh, Dr. Perry has it. Dr. Perry has it still.
No, yeah, I plan on, I'm bringing the family.
Oh, good. Oh, great.
You have to get started.
It's getting tough to work like a 12-hour day. It's like I had to decide how long to work, like the morning and then not work for more.
Okay, everyone, thanks for your patience. The time is now 7:08, and I will call this meeting of the Town Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all for coming tonight to this special Town Council meeting. The Town Council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook link, for the, Facebook page, rather, for the link. I do not have any condolences this evening for our veterans and their families, but please join me in a moment of silence for all of our veterans' or families who have passed. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to start off this evening with some announcements from the President. I'm happy to share that thanks to the recent work by our Finance Department, library staff, and Counselor Murphy, we've confirmed the release of funds from the Lepicki's Family Memorial Trust. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that properly. Generously left by longtime resident Dolores Lepicki to specifically support our library and cultural events here in Bridgewater. As part of this, the town will be making a one-time $10,000 donation to the Fourth of July Committee. Thank you all for coming here tonight to recognize their incredible efforts, not only this year, but in years, in years past. The Fourth of July celebration has always been a community-supported event, and we want to preserve that tradition by extending this donation on behalf of the Lepicki family. This gift honors the spirit while also reflecting the intent of the family's legacy. And for a little bit more information, I'll defer to our Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, you're correct in everything that you've just stated. We believe the total amount of the trust that is dedicated for cultural events besides the library is $193,000. So in looking at that balance, we believe that up to $10,000 is, you know, to cover expenses for Fourth of July as possible this year. And then going forward into future years, we need to set a policy about how we're going to invest those funds, what is appropriate to use each year so that the principal stays intact and can support the town for years to come. So I can't say that that amount would be appropriate every single year or other cultural events. People might bring forth ideas to, to funds. We want to put that, all that framework in place. But we can cut a check, check this week, so I would just ask the Fourth of July Committee to look at what they've got and what they need. And if it's less than 10, that's good, and if they need 10, that's understood.
Could the members of the committee please just come up to the podium? And let's recognize you all for your efforts this year and every year. Thank you very much, guys. We don't have anything to present to you tonight.
One member missing, unfortunately. She's down the Cape, poor her. And of course, we have to mention our husbands and wives and children that are always there to support us. We do very much appreciate this. At last count, I think, oh, come on, people can hear me. I think, Jeff, we were what, 20,000 behind? So this literally puts it in half. And that 10,000, we should be able to get during parking and our last vendor fees and everything else that comes in. So this is a huge relief. So, I mean, we knew it was going off this year, but next year is going to be the U.S.'s 250th, and we're hoping to do things larger and bigger and better. We're not quite sure how yet, so don't ask any questions, but we'll need more money. So this is for the most part Nancy, Lauren, Robin, Keith, Jeff, and I'm Lisa. And we do have a small present for each of you. It's just been a very contentious in this town for the last couple of weeks. We just wanted to do something fun. It's all under $50, I promise you. Nothing free. So Matt, your council is up. So if you had kids, we bought you T-shirts for your kids. If their sizes are wrong, just tell me. If you don't have kids, you got a cute little water bottle. Just as our thank you. And we didn't know about the $10,000, so now I feel like I owe more, but I can't. And, and before I get any further, the money did not come from the Fourth of July funds. It came from the Fourth of July Committee. There is a difference. So we do not spend the money on frivolous things. We're very, very careful about where it goes, trust me on that. But thank you very much. We definitely, definitely appreciate that donation. It's going to help a great deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming you guys are marching? Okay. And we have to run because Tropical Smoothie is doing a fundraiser for us tonight, so we need to participate with them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Mr. President? Just a point of clarification. I'm overjoyed by this, but does this require a budget transfer or vote?
No, it does not.
It's, because it's not a town appropriation, it's within, directly, it's within the Town Manager's ability to do.
Just checking.
Good, good question.
Thanks again, and thanks to Counselor Murphy for doing a lot of the work on our end. I take no credit for that. Finally, one last announcement. I'll actually ask Ms. Hunt to take over for me. We have some, some visitors here from BSU, as I understand. So, Mrs. Hunt, would you mind welcoming our visitors here?
I'm happy to. Everybody always says they can't hear me, so I'm going to try to get it right into my mouth here. Mandela Fellows, will you just stand up? We can see you, but just stand up and take a bow for all of us. This, this is a partial contingent. You can sit back down. Thank you. This is a partial contingent of the Mandela Washington Fellows who come over. They are the presumed leaders of their individual African countries. And they are chosen with great, great care and a lot of applications and a lot of hard work. They are physicians, they are lawyers, they are...
Elected officials.
Elected officials. Elected officials. And they are fantastic people. So they're here for six weeks at BSU. And then, I don't know, usually, the Mandellas have been coming over here since about, I call them the Mandellas, they're the Mandela Fellows. But they've been coming over since about 19, or 2018, 2018. And usually when they get done here, they've done a bunch of things that are required of them. They work very, very hard while they're here. And then they go to Washington, D.C., and they compete with all the other Mandela Fellows who are here scattered at universities across the United States. And, and then they either go to do another activity at someplace that's, that has asked for them to come, or they go back home to see their families who they've left for this whole time. One of them, I don't know if one of the ladies I ate with last night has a, like, a child who's going to turn one while she's over here. So they, they give up a lot to be here, and they earn a lot. And I just mentioned to one of them, who's a diplomat, that we were having the meeting tonight. And so several of them came. So that's, that's why they're here. And if you get a chance to meet them, they're fabulous people. Say hi to them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt, and thank you all for coming and joining us this evening. That's all that I have for announcements. We will now move on to Citizens Open Forum. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. Anyone may comment up to this ti, at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. I'll wave at you with, if you have like about 30 seconds left.
Hi, my name is Shannon Cambria, 3 Candy Lane. I think it's right at three minutes, I'll try my best. I was trying to find the right words to say here, and I kept deleting, rewriting them because nothing I said felt like it was going to truly convey how disappointed and scared I feel for this upcoming school year. But here we go. When we first moved here seven years ago, I immediately fell in love with the location. We live right behind the high school, and I was so excited that once my three girls got to ninth grade, they could just cut through our backyard and walk to school. It was going to be glorious after all of those years of waiting in parent drop-off and pickup lines. But now, now my oldest is going into the eighth grade. She just got accepted into the school choice program in West Bridgewater. So instead of getting excited for her final year in middle school with all of her friends, she is faced with a decision that she should not have to make. Leave everything and everyone she knows for a chance at a better education, or stay in an environment that does not have her best interest at heart. She already received her schedule for West Bridgewater, and it far exceeds anything that Bridgewater Middle School has to offer. She has a foreign language class, a TV production class, advanced placement classes, an engineering, and a separate technology class, and also music and art, unlike Bridgewater Middle School, which only offers music for seventh grade and art for eighth grade. I had held out hope that the override would pass, and we wouldn't have to make this decision, but here we are. And I'm still waiting to hear back from West Bridgewater for my incoming fourth and seventh graders, and I'm hoping now more than ever that they are also accepted. So I guess I have a few more years of parent drop-off lines to deal with, but I would deal with that any day over having my kids walk to a high school that has study halls half the day. I'd also like to mention that there was a line in Mr. Powers' new proposed budget presentation that said special education is projected to start the year in compliance. I work at the Williams as a sub-separate ESP, and I can promise you that will not be the case. Three out of four sub-separate teachers were pink-slept at the Williams, the teacher I work with included. We have a total of 58 sub-separate students in grades three through five, spread across three, hopefully four, classes. But you don't need to be a math teacher to realize there will be more than 12 students in each class. What is it going to take to get the public to realize we need help? For a student to flip a desk and injure a staff member and then not have a substitute to cover their absence? For a student to elope out of the building and not have the manpower to find them before something awful happens? And it's not just sub-separate students running out of the classrooms. So imagine having 34 fourth graders, and one leaves the classroom in the middle of your lesson. So now you have 33 fourth graders waiting, while you, the only adult in the room, have to call the office and have them call over the loudspeaker for that student to return to class. Then the two secretaries, or now with the new budget, it might only be one secretary, has to stop what they're doing to watch the cameras relay any sightings over the walkie to the guidance and administration. And hopefully, the guidance and administration aren't already involved in other issues or meetings and are able to quickly run to your aid. These are not hypotheticals, these are inevitables, unless we do something about it now. Our students and staff deserve a safe and supportive school environment, but it would be even better if the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham actually supported us too. Thank you.
May I give a hand up to the councilors?
Sure.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Melissa Raymondetta, 317 Lakeside Drive. Thanks for hearing my comments, as always. Final environmental impact report, an FEIR, and a notice of project change, MPC for Lake Shore Center Phase Four, has been filed with the Mass Environmental Policy Act Office. Phase Four includes five projects. A four-story, 225-unit, 55-inch overdevelopment, an 80-bed inpatient hospital, a five-story, 110-room hotel, a drive-through coffee shop, and a restaurant. An FEIR is the culmination of the EIR process, which analyzes the potential environmental impacts of a proposed project and includes information about wetlands, drinking water, stormwater, traffic, cultural resources, emissions, and resiliency, among other topics. Public comments are due to MEPA by Friday, July 11. The FEIR and MPC, as well as information on how to comment, can be found at elnaft.org. I encourage all Bridgewater residents to review the FEIR and MPC and comment by the 11th. During the 2023 Planning Board hearings about the second hotel project at Lake Shore Center, one of the five projects in Phase Four, it was noted that Lake Shore Center would likely exceed its total 100,000 gallons per day water and sewer capacity after this second hotel was built. The Planning Board approved the site plan for the hotel in January 2024 under the purview of the 35-year-old 1988 decision on the application of McNeil and Associates Incorporated that stated that the town agreed to provide up to 100,000 gallons per day of water and 100,000 gallons per day of sewage capacity. To reiterate, it was noted that Lake Shore Center would likely exceed its total 100,000 gallons per day water and sewer capacity after the second hotel was built. So why is Claremont stating in the FEIR that all projects within the Lake Shore Center development have and will continue to be served by municipal water and sewer? As noted in the FEIR, the approved hotel and the four additional projects will consume an additional 101,100 gallons per day of water and 81,365 gallons per day wastewater generation, beyond what is already being used by the existing Lake Shore Center structures. Lake Shore Center's Phase Four water and sewer requirements will, will exceed the limit of 100,000 gallons per day water and sewer capacity that Bridgewater is contractually and legally obligated to provide. So why has Claremont stated this, that all projects will be served by municipal water and sewer in the FEIR? And I ask that the town comment on this fact, because this is contractual and legal, and the FEIR goes beyond the 100,000 gallon per day limits. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. James Walsh, 60 Crescent Street. I wanted to take a moment first off to just thank everyone here. I know the past several months have been really, really difficult, not just with the override, but with, with several different topics. override, but with several different topics, and has required a significant amount of your time and attention, so thank you for all you continue to do for the town. Tonight, as you discuss the fiscal year '26 budget, I'd urge you to seriously consider adopting the state's residential property tax exemption. By adopting this exemption, we can reduce property taxes for the majority of homeowners without affecting our overall tax levy. I've emailed you with more details, and I have some printouts as well to fill your folders tonight, but in a nutshell, the exemption reduces the assessed value of all owner-occupied homes, shifting the tax burden to non-resident landlords into the highest-value residential properties. It's designed by the state to more fairly spread out the tax levy in towns with rental properties. If this had been adopted in Bridgewater this year, any homeowner whose home is assessed below $660,000 would have seen a lower tax bill. This is the majority of homeowners in town. The lower the value of the home, the more savings the homeowner would see. A home assessed at $350,000 would see up to $1,500 dropped from their annual tax bill. Why am I bringing this up now? Over the past conversations on the override, two separate truths have become very clear to me, both of which are equally valid. On the one hand, we have neighbors who are deeply worried about their financial future, neighbors who are barely getting by month to month. This includes many of our senior citizens who have made a life in Bridgewater but are now on a fixed income and struggling with rising costs. This exemption would give them significant relief, and it would reduce the fears that come up every year as their tax bills inevitably increase. On the other hand, our schools, infrastructure, and services are under immense pressure and strain from our rapid growth in town. These costs are continuing to rise, and we can't avoid that, but we can change how those costs are shared. As we saw in the override presentations this spring, the average single-family homeowner in Bridgewater paid a little over $7,000 in property taxes this year. However, our town's largest landlord, who's very popular tonight, they only paid about $2,400 for each of their units per year, one-third of your average single-family taxpayer. Despite each housing unit having a similar impact on schools, infrastructure, and services, their owners pay vastly different amounts. One owner is a multimillion-dollar corporation, the other is a Bridgewater resident who is forced to pay three times as much per year. This isn't fair, and more importantly, it's not sustainable. Non-resident landlords own one out of every four housing units in Bridgewater. We can no longer continue the same methods to provide quality services and infrastructure that every citizen deserves without asking landlords to pay a fair share. This exemption would help correct that imbalance and set us up for success in the future. I hope you'll strongly consider adopting the residential exemption to support our most vulnerable residents and to build a more balanced and sustainable revenue model for Bridgewater's future. Plus, you'd be able to be the first council to ever reduce taxes for people, which I think would be a nice selling point, right? So I have some handouts I'll share, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nancy Giappini. I live in Eight Birch Hill Road, where I've lived there for forty-seven years as of this summer. That is, some may not know where that is, but it's the back part of the NIP. And I've been affected quite a bit about the building that's going along 104, but we really have a real concern if these other projects go forward. The traffic is one of the biggest problems, and just a restaurant coming in or a café, it's just too much. I don't have sewer, and I don't have water supplied to me from the town of Bridgewater. It's never been offered to me. We do have our own well. Our sewer comes from the town of Rainham for us, so we've been very lucky and fortunate for that. So I can't speak for that, but I do worry about my well, the more building that goes on. And also, my backyard is lake frontage, and believe me, it's been lake frontage quite a few years, because we lose three-quarters of our yard due to all of the building that's been going on around, and the trees coming down. So we have a real concern, and we hope the town will look at this and come out and see where we all live, and see what the problem is, and what's being taken away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Shifting the gears a little bit on the TIF committee members that you're looking to vote on tonight, I just have a question. On the meeting where the other three, Councilor Strigles, Murphy, and McGrath were accepted, but you couldn't confirm the committee because you didn't have two others, and it needed five. So it's mentioned, the other two that is recommended by the town manager, but is it gonna be discussed tonight to start over and say, just make sure you mention the other three? I don't see it mentioned tonight, so it wasn't, I just question, was it, are they officially part of it when it wasn't able to be confirmed? So I just wanted to make sure that it's done correctly, and mention the other three, and add the two, and then vote. Don't forget to mention them tonight. I just want to make sure if that's, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but it seems like, since it wasn't able to be confirmed, that you have to also mention those tonight in your decision. I kind of question one of them, just for residential, resident person, who was a town council member and was, it just seems like it should have been somebody else. So I just put it out there, I just disagree with one of them. And I just want to make sure that that, I don't agree with the TIF, I think it's the wrong time to do it. I said, as President, what's, I know it's gonna be zoned for that area, that's what the purpose of it, to see if we can do it, but what would stop in the future another developer saying, hey, what about me? How about zoning this area? You know, is it something that would stop just on Broad Street? Or is this a potential for other, I want to make sure that's clear, but I don't think it's the right time to be doing that, where everybody else has to pay taxes, and you want to have this particular developer not. I know it doesn't cost the town anything, but it does kind of cost us in the beginning. So I just want to mention that. And also, for the NIP, water is a concern, everything else that's been discussed, we can't afford to have more and more water. I just, it's an area that people need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Donna Jewell, Keith Place. I'm just here to give you a little bit of an update from the last time I spoke on the appropriation of the $1,017,000 to the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District for fiscal year '25. I had informed you that I had made a public record request, and I was waiting for additional information. Since we last were together, I have only received a very small additional amount, which was for the girls' softball field at the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School for the amount of $32,000. So that still leaves about $550,000 that I have not been able to obtain public records information for, for the expenditure of the $550,000. I've made the public records request in June, I've sent several follow-ups, so I have to assume that this is all the documents that they have to provide me with. I raise this issue because money is an issue, desperate need for the schools. I don't know where the money is held in the district. I don't know what happens to the remaining balance. I don't know if it's in the general fund, I don't know if it's set aside strictly for the use in Bridgewater. I don't have those answers. I did reach out to Blythe Robinson to ask about the accounting of it after our last meeting, and she responded to me. I'd rather that she give you her update on how that all works, because I heard the superintendent say at the last school committee meeting that Rainham handles their money differently. They pay, they pay the school district back based on the receipt of an invoice. Bridgewater keeps the money, and allocates the money and processes it directly to the school, and there's no, there aren't any invoices coming forward. So it's just, again, my recommendation that we let Ms. Robinson explain to the council in the future what her recommendations would be. I didn't get into that further with her, out of my area expertise, but as a taxpayer, I would like to know that that money's just being spent for Bridgewater, and it's just being spent on the schools. I feel terrible that the schools are in the position that they're in now, the towns are in a terrible position, and we need every penny we can to support the schools. And if they have that money, and if there's a way to put it towards teachers or towards the $800,000 we need to come up with, so be it, and let's look, let's look for every penny. I did, I will be back, because I put in a second request for the $1,085 that was appropriated for fiscal year '24. I do have the list of projects that that was supposed to cover. I don't know if it did or it didn't, but I think it's worth looking at a little bit further, just to see where that goes. In reference to the TIF, just my personal opinion is, we should hold off on anything right now till we figure out where the district is in financial need, and where the town is in financial need, to consider giving relief to any money, whether it be any company on taxes, whether it be one year, three years, fifteen years, I don't know. I think that's something that should be delayed until we get a better picture of where we're going. I would also like to say thank you to Blythe and to Lori for what seems to be an incredible amount of time they put into all of financial digging and analysis on the plans. I see you at the meetings, I see you everywhere, and I know it's a tremendous, tremendous job and a lot of work, and I appreciate that as a resident, knowing that our money is being watched over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Casey Rodriguez, 45, Jeans Way. I am a parent and a special educator here in the district, and to echo the point of our first speaker, my classroom is one of those classrooms that will be wildly out of compliance at the start of the school year. I am slated to have twenty-two transition-age students, which is ten over the legal limit, and four more than I've had the past two years. There might be some way to shift students around and get those numbers down a little bit, but doing so will violate other mandates for how we group our children. And it's really frustrating to me and disappointing to me, because these are our most vulnerable learners. The school committee voted the other night on the best option that they had, and it wasn't a good one. And make no mistake, this will be a hard year, after a hard year, after a hard year before it, and we're gonna need a better plan for the '27-'28 school year. I'm really hopeful that all of you will come see our classrooms, understand the pain points, especially as they relate to our youngest learners and our most vulnerable. I knocked on a lot of doors in this override effort, and by and large, you know, we have our very loud yes voices, we have our very loud no voices, but from the doors I knocked on and the people I spoke to, most people fell in the middle. And I just wanted to express to you what I found was the overwhelming perspective on the override. We care about the students, we care about our teachers, we want them to have everything they need, but we have lost faith in the town. We don't trust that the money that we pay in taxes is going where it's supposed to go. We don't see the turnarounds that are promised. We have questions about salaries and positions at every level of this town. So that, that was a hard pill to swallow. You know, people want the best for our kids. I truly believe that most residents, all residents, want the best for our students, but they didn't trust us to do what we said we would do with that money. And as a result, you know, I know my students are gonna suffer this year. I'm the last point in the district, right? I'm the last stop on the way out the door, and twenty-two of them can't get what they need from me. So I'm really hopeful that, that we get through this year, but also that all of you will partner with us to really isolate the pain points and make a path forward, you know? I'm new to this local government thing, I don't know what it's gonna take to restore trust, I don't know how to get our taxes where they need to be, and get our budgets where they need to be, but like, I'll be here every, every few weeks at our meetings, and I will do your, my part, and I'm really hopeful that you guys will do your part to understand what these kids are lacking and what they're gonna need going forward. So, come to my classroom anytime. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Eric Hoy, 120 Oak Ridge Lane, Bridgewater. Just to follow up on what Mrs. Rodriguez just said, I'm also an English teacher at the high school. My class size is projected to be about thirty-five, and I teach five sections of senior English. So we're looking at, I'm looking at about a caseload of one-hundred-and-seventy-five students this year. Just to give some perspective, that's about fifty more than I typically have. It's about seventy-five more than probably most people have within their, within the department, the way things have been staffed in the past. I'm greatly concerned, not only about the way that I can meet the needs of my students with such numbers and provide meaningful feedback on the assignments that they turn in, on essays that they write, meeting with them during the process to give them valuable feedback. But as I mentioned at school committee last week, my biggest concern with the budget that's been put forth to be voted on by the towns is, of course, that it is not enough. It is the best we can do right now, I really hope we can find it, within our general funds to kind of meet the district with what they're bringing to the table, and in turn, excuse me, with the $800,000 that they're pulling out of E and D. But my greatest concern is school safety, specifically at the high school. Of course, you've heard concerns about other schools and what the safety needs are, and that they're not going to be met, but at the high school specifically, with class sizes of thirty-five, twenty-nine to forty-three, as were projected in Mr. Powers' presentation to school committee last week, I am greatly concerned that we have now shrunk the pool of available staff in the building to a point where it is unsafe, that not enough supervision can be provided on the day-to-day, during passing times, bathrooms, hallways, large group coverages, if there's teachers that are absent for whatever reason, using a sick day, using a personal day, as they are entitled to in their contract. I'm greatly concerned about the school safety piece of it, because I don't think that we have enough adults available to supervise our students. That should be gravely concerning, and I do hope that when you discuss the budget outlook as a council, that you're able to do what needs to be done in order to meet that post-election option one that was put forth by Mr. Powers and adopted by the school committee by a six-two vote. It's nowhere near enough, it's what we're gonna have to work with. We, the teachers, are thrilled to work with you, to do whatever needs to be done moving forward. We will help in this change. We will help and continue to advocate for change so that we can meet the needs of our students in both Bridgewater and Rainham. Thank you for hearing me tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Jay Spigoun, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Mr. President, members of the council, residents in attendance, good evening. I know tonight on your agenda, you are gonna be having to have some difficult discussions about the budget and what it looks like for FY '26 in light of the recent elections in both Bridgewater and Rainham. As the Chair of your Finance Committee, I serve as an advice and consent arm as part of that committee. I look forward to working with all of you if any of those matters come down to the Finance Committee. But I will say this to you tonight, you are facing some very difficult challenges and some very steep headwinds right now in this moment. I feel it is incumbent upon us to try to find a solution that is both equitable and fair, not only to the residents in town, but also to the school district. I find that this wasn't a failure of democracy, but instead, a full-throated rebuttal of the inability of the town to effectively argue for the positives that would have been from a override passage versus saying anything about it failing. So the difficulties and challenges that we have are the result of that. I will note that the town has been under taxed for about thirty years, and the fact that we have gotten to this point is the result of that inability to tax it in a proper way. And that's because the tax rates have just been low the last twenty-five to thirty years. So I would say to you, Mr. President, and to those in attendance tonight, if you're looking to enhance the credibility of the town government, and those of us who work on behalf of the town, both as paid employees and volunteers, you can start with some goodwill by making an effort to have a conversation about how we actually address taxation in this municipality going forward, so that if an override does come forward again, there can at least be a convincing argument, whether it's for or against its passage, and that however it shakes out, we accept that action from the vote. So with that, Mr. President, I will leave you with this. Do what you need to do, do what needs to be done, get it done fast, get it done efficiently, and start bringing the reputation back for the town. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Algar, 19 Heather Lane. This might be a little outside the box, what about using Save Volunteers to assist at the schools? I'll receive that question there. I mean, I think if- I mean, I think it could be a good use of the town's volunteers.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which will be appointments. If anyone would like to come up and speak, let me just make sure we still have it on our agenda. We will have comments at the end.
I'd like to charter objection to this item.
And I'd like to charter objection also.
I'll defer to council. This is, is this a measure that's being voted on? An appointment isn't a measure, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it is the first time these appointments have come up, so I think it's the first time these appointments have come up, I think it's a measure, so I think they can object, and then it will be put off till the next meeting.
Okay.
No, once there's a charter objection, it could be no discussion.
But is your, so your finding this time is that it's on the first reading of...
Well, I'm finding that it's on any, well, it's not a reading, it's just an appointment.
But at the last, at the last one precedent-wise, when I gave advice, my advice was the charter objection can only come at the first reading of a measure.
Yeah.
So I think the council went opposite of that last time.
Yeah, we went on adoption, and how I would see this is that it's the only, we only read appointments once, it's only, it's a first and a last.
Okay. So you're going off of the adoption definition as opposed to the timing of the reading?
Personally, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
My question to you, and you already answered this, but I just wanna double-check that appointments are adoptions, because we're not adopting a measure, it's just an appointment.
It's always, it's a measure.
It's a measure?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a measure, but you're making an appointment, you're ratified, the measure is to ratify the appointment made by the town manager. You're not actually appointing anyone, because appointments come from the town manager, and they're ratified by the council.
And the ratification's the measure.
The ratification is the measure, not the appointment itself.
Cool, sounds good. So we'll move on then to discussions. So tonight, we have town fiscal outlook, FY twenty-six budget, school district assessment, and override implications. That was from our comments, sorry.
Mr. President, this point of information, was the charter, did you make, was there a motion to invoke the charter to put this off, or are we viewing this as the first reading?
Mark.
They just made a charter objection.
It was, oh, it did?
There was two charter objections.
It was the way, the wording, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Oh, yeah, that's how I understood it, at least.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify the wording.
Yeah, they may wanna clarify that, but I'm assuming those are both charter objections.
Yeah.
And because it's a charter objection, it would go to our next scheduled meeting?
Nope, that's fine, just trying to clarify exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah. Based on the words that were used, thank you.
I just didn't know whether or not we could have an elaboration as to what the charter objection was specifically.
No, there's no discussion on charter objections.
Okay, so we'll move on to discussions again. Town fiscal outlook, FY twenty-six budget, school district assessment and override implications. The discussion tonight will include the Bridgewater-Rainham School District Budget, the recent override vote, and overall FY twenty-six municipal revenues and expenditures. I left this broadly because we were not sure of the action the school committee would take, so we had to put our budget, or rather, our agenda forward as such. So I do want to keep the conversation focused, and it is an open conversation amongst ourselves. We're not making any decisions tonight, unlike the school committee, who did have the ability to vote and pass a budget last week, so we are not able to do that this evening, so I just wanted to make that clear to everybody out there in the audience. The school committee did meet last week to certify the post-election option budget number one in the amount of ninety-eight million, five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. The net increased assessment to Bridgewater is, and I'm just rounding here, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. We have forty-five days from that time, which is about August, it's August ninth, but August eighth is a Friday, to approve or not approve the new budget. As I understand it, and if I have this wrong, Town Council Rollins can correct me, but Bridgewater and Rainham both must approve the budget, otherwise it would invoke a joint district-wide meeting to where the school committee would meet again to either ratify this budget or amend their number, and we, I hope that we could all come to a discussion here, not tonight, obviously, we have a lot of work to do between here and approving the budget, but meeting this ask and doing everything that we can. So I wanted to just open up discussion to councilors as to what is our will to fund the budget the school committee passed. My personal view is that we need to do everything that we can out of our general budget funds to fund this, and like I said, do everything that we can, but I am one of nine of us, so I wanna open up the discussion, and let's, again, let's keep this organized and use this as an opportunity to have some ideas thrown out there as we work with our new town manager who does start tomorrow. Not all at once. Sir?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. I think, I would hope we hear from all councilors on this, because I think it's a big matter, an important matter, and a large dollar amount attached to that, so hopefully everybody gets a chance to speak tonight. I am in favor of supporting funding that amount that was requested by the school committee last week. I do think personally it's not enough, I agree, but that is the number that the school committee settled on, and so now it's in our hands to agree to that funding. I also support your comments about that coming from the general budget, and I think that's extremely important, that the town account for that. The citizens of this town already voted on an override, they did not wanna increase their taxes to pay for these things, so we should not look for other ways to increase our budget to account for this. It's not a sustainable model, and so I think it's up to us now to make it fit into the general budget and see how that shakes out. And I would point to our new town manager and our finance director to provide us with a few options of what's best there. They know each department best, they know each department head best, I think there are conversations that need to happen amongst departments to see how we can get this money squeezed out of the budget, but that's my own personal opinion. I just wanna summarize, I do think we need to fill this, fulfill this amount of money, and I do think it needs to come from the operating budget, but I would defer to the town manager, the new town manager, and the finance director on where that money exactly comes from.
Thank you, Council Murphy, and just one comment on that. We do seek input and direction from the town manager, you know, Justin, Mr. Castenover starts tomorrow, and we will vote to adopt that measure, but we hope to work collaboratively. So tonight, you know, talk openly about suggestions, but inevitably that will have to come to us and then for us to approve. We cannot on our own do that, so who else would like to take the floor next? Council Wendy?
I would, I'm greatly anticipating our town manager coming tomorrow, I think he can give us good guidance. I'm also in favor of supporting the amount that the school committee wanted to bring forth, but I would like us to look at multiple options, not just cutting the general budget, but looking at our stabilization budget. I don't wanna do it year after year after year, because we would, you know, have nothing left for anything, but I think we should look at that as an option. I mean, it's raining, it's a rainy day fund, I think we should take a look at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Kennedy?
I do support trying to fund the schools as much as we possibly can, and I think a few ways to do that would be looking into the positions we do currently have in town, some of them were brought up earlier today, that aren't currently filled, that those roles haven't necessarily been needed, or we haven't found the need for them in multiple years. This may be a time to look into not fulfilling those positions. I'd oppose touching our stabilization fund, specifically because the voters voted to not continue raising our taxes, and eventually that will also run out if we continue to have failed overrides, we will drain our stabilization fund in an effort to fund the schools, and that is going to fail, and will leave us much worse off when I think we have a real emergency. The schools, in the situation there, it could be argued that it is an emergency, and I would understand that, but I think that that fund is in a different kind of, is, the purpose is for a different kind of emergency, one that is not foreseen. This is kind of a decision by the taxpayers to not raise their taxes to fund that school system. We also have something on the docket later to discuss. I do think a general overview of the school system by an outside entity would benefit the taxpayers and benefit the confidence that we can have in the school itself. I think that that is a big thing that we should be looking at, and we should be urging the school committee to support that effort. The taxpayers want to know that the money being sent to the schools is being spent where it is. Obviously, we have teachers here that have spoken tonight, there's true concerns in multiple schools, in different demographics in the school systems, and those are all real concerns, and they do exist, but that doesn't mean that we're seeing some of the other stuff in the operating side and where some of the money is being spent, which was also brought up by a citizen this evening. So I would like to see the school system and the school committee support that, and to be quite frank, if the school committee and the school system doesn't support an outside entity coming in to raise that level of confidence in the school system, I would not be surprised at all to see another override fail in the future if that was brought to the voters purely because it wasn't looked into. I know this isn't being called an audit, and it's not an audit, that word is thrown around quite a bit, but what people want to see is an outside source coming and looking into things and seeing what's going on and giving information back to the residents and the council and the town government in general, so that's what I would like to see done. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Strickles?
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to the budget that the school committee obviously voted on, it was not what I think any of us hoped for. We wanna do more, we want to do better for the students, and ultimately, I do think that it would be irresponsible to pull it out of our stabilization. I feel like we would be right back in where we were in 2010, where we faced a very similar situation, where we didn't have a stabilization fund, we lost our bond rating, and I do not want that for the town. We have done a lot of good work in the last fifteen years to rebuild that stabilization fund, and if we dip into it once, it will become precedent. We dipped into it once, so let's keep dipping into it. I think that the general fund is a much more fiscally responsible way to solve this immediate need, because ultimately, that's what the taxpayers have basically voted in favor of. Mrs. Rodriguez stepped up here and said that when she door-knocked, she said, "Everyone wants to support the kids, everyone wants to support the schools, but they've lost faith in the town." What better way for us to gain some faith back and have them know that we are taking every single bit of their fiscal dollars and using them wisely than to use the funds that they are already paying for and not funds that we have saved over the last fifteen years to stabilize our town and our government? So I'm very much in favor of making this number work however we see fit and making sure that our students at least get what the school committee is asking for, even though I don't think that it is enough.
Thank you. Council Hellenberg?
Yes. I would like to focus on revenue, and clearly, we don't have enough revenue. What we need to do is investigate the school budget, and the word audit gets people triggered, but we need to find out what exactly is going on. Ms. Jewell, this evening, pointed out that there is half a million dollars, which has not been accounted for yet with her request for information. That is a significant amount and could hire back quite a number of teachers. Another area of revenue would be our golf course. Now, I had a conversation with Ms. Guarini, our town treasurer, and she tells me that we are earning income from the golf course, that in the past, we had difficulties, but we are now earning money. I would like to see, again, there was an accounting done five years ago, my understanding is, and after five years, I think we should have another accounting done to see that we are maximizing our revenue to the town. And so, we should go for revenue, and in the meantime, I support the, what the school committee has come up with in the meantime. We're gonna have a tough time in 2026, F-2026, but if we do some of these things to get to the bottom of where revenue sources are, I think we will have a better time in FY-27. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Henn?
I know that we all received the letter from Patrick Driscoll, but I'd like to read it into the record so that it's there for the public. Dear President Loretty and councilors, as discussions take place in the coming days and weeks regarding the BR budget, I hope your focus is to stabilize the district and at a minimum, provide funding to allow for a level service budget. Parents and children in this district are feeling the stress of the recent vote and what could happen. I think it's important we let them know right away that things are going to be okay. I'm a big fan of an operational audit. I would like to see the healthcare costs come down and the privatization of services that can be best dealt with, firms outside of the district, to name a few, but trying to rearrange the deck chairs in a storm is a bad idea. Stabilize the district with the use of stabilization funds if needed for one year, one year, and then perform the audits, et cetera, over the next twelve months to improve and build efficiencies that have a better plan for FY-27. The goal should be to immediately preserve the programming and staffing of FY-25 for FY-26, and have a detailed plan for growth based on the detailed analysis of the district and its spending for FY-27. I appreciate all your efforts, Patrick Driscoll. I agree with most of that. I hate to say, use a stabilization fund, but I would never say, use the stabilization fund and have that be all you do. I'm thinking, use it for this year to get us there, do the audits, figure out what is, what is, and what isn't, how's it being used, and let's try to have it fixed by next year so that we don't go back and use stabilization funds again and again until three years from now we have none. So that's from Patrick, the last little bit is from me. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. So I looked at the independent audits report on the town for 2024 to look for money, and we have bank certificates that mature in 2025 that are worth, in 2024, seven million, five-hundred-and-forty-six, three-forty. I don't know when exactly in 2025 it matures, but I thought we could use that. And on the audit, it had non-major fund over eight-point-nine million. I don't know if that is still in the town. And the general stabilization fund is in two parts. One part has seven million, five-hundred-and-seventy-one, seven-forty-three, and the other part of it has a one-time unforeseen stabilization fund, that's worth three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-seven. So I'm not sure if we still have that, but in the audit, it looks like we have a lot more money than what we need. So I would have to ask Ms. Robinson to get back, or Lori, about that.
Any other comments from councilors? I have a few of my own, but I wanted to open the opportunity for a second comment. No? Yeah, so I think that one of the things that we need to address as a council, again, with the town manager's office, is the fact that our expenses are simply outpacing our revenues, and we really need to dig into why that's happening. We're gonna be talking about salaries later on and how we can curb some of that, those rising costs. We need to look at these numbers, and we need to have some tough conversations, and we did have some of those conversations earlier in budget and finance, but this council really needs to look at those numbers and make sure that we can project out into the future. Looking at the last five years, there are some departments that are increasing, you know, year over year by eight to ten percent, and this is not sustainable, and we really need to see, you know, why that is and what we could do to slow that down, where we could build more efficiencies amongst our departments. We're part of a regional school district, and we are not experiencing the efficiencies that a lot of other towns see. We are not experiencing cost savings where they could be realized. For example, the towns that don't have regional school districts, their finance department, their HR, and their IT, they oversee, you know, all those operations. their HR, and their IT, they oversee, you know, all those operations, and now we have, you know, multiple costs on both sides. So what can we do to, to build more efficiencies in our, in our operations? Is there an opportunity to regionalize certain services? We really need to start being creative. The message that I heard from Ms. Rodriguez and a lot of residents is that people want to see us do with what we have currently before we ask, before they agree to give us more. We have a lot of people that, in my opinion, they feel unfulfilled with what they're getting already, and so how can we ask them to provide more? And we have to do more with what we have now. I still don't think it's enough. We still need to increase that, but we need to build, in my opinion, more faith and more trust in our ability to, to manage. And for me, that begins here at, at the council. So we need to, again, work collaboratively and have some tough conversations and figure out what's the, what's the best path forward. So I'll, again, open it up to any of the other councilors if they have any further comments before we kind of move on with our discussions.
You brought up revenue, and I don't think our town's good at revenue. I mean, we talk about Claremont Hotel was brought up, but look at what they do. They saw the land near the lake shore being for sale, they bought it, and now they're going to have a restaurant. They know that the biggest population is, is senior citizens. They're building a 55-plus. We have a huge drug problem, so they're building a rehab. So compared to what our town does, we buy an old mobile station, we're going to change it into a park. We've been Phase 1, we've spent $1 million on it. It's never going to bring us revenue, and it's going to cost us for maintenance and upkeeping. I mean, and then we're having our first development on Broad Street, and we're glad about it, but we're thinking about giving him a 15-year tax increment. So you look at Claremont, who's bringing in more revenue? Claremont or our economic department? We really need to start looking in different revenue and not take money away from our employees. So I think we need to go more in a direction and start finding out stuff and how much land we have for development, for businesses and stuff like that, because obviously, Claremont's blowing us out of the water, and that shouldn't be.
Counsel Allenberg.
Yes. With regard to Claremont, I would like to see some of these major corporations invest in the town. For example, they're right there by the nip. Can they dig another well for the town? Because we need another well. Can our town manager negotiate such a thing to help our water supply? So that's something to be done in the future. Okay? And in terms of what I said about revenue, we need to, for like the golf course, trust but verify. In other words, we, we are supposed to get a lease every year of $125,000. Then we're supposed to get 2% of $900,000 to 1.2 million, and then after 1.2 million, we're supposed to get 3% of revenues. So we need to verify, are we getting the full complement of our revenues? That's all.
Thank you. Counsel Kelly.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what you were saying. I agree with that very much and as well as Vice President McGrath. We do have a revenue issue, and obviously, one of the ways to raise that was through the override, and the townspeople denied that. And I, I do think that what was brought up tonight in the confidence in just not the council, but the school committee and the government in general is a lack of confidence. So what we can do to build that confidence, so if we were to have to put something towards the town at a later date to raise taxes, we're in a better situation, and we have a, a more palpable override scenario going on, where they believe that that money's going to be sent where they want it sent, and they are able to see the future in that. But it is, it is difficult to raise and increase our revenues through taxes when citizens, and I know these are different funds, but, you know, they do have the brown water, the, the roads are a mess, and some of these are going to need to be dealt with in very different ways. So maybe the communication style that's coming out of the town government needs to be adjusted, or we need to take a different approach to the way that we're talking to citizens on these issues, or different kinds of outreach. These may be discussions for another point, but I, I think we need to look at the short term, how to solve the immediate problem, and then, you know, where we're going to want to look at, you know, two or three years down the road to deal with these revenue issues. Because even with trying to sustain, or trying to roll things back, we still have contracts we have to follow and agree to. There's multiple years on some of those. I've heard from different people that were on the council in the past that within the last 10 years or so, the size of our town government increased substantially. And these may be issues that the new town manager needs to address and come in with his experience and say, what can I work with and what can we not work with? And those aren't directly things we can affect as a council, because we can't remove any employees or departments, but we do control the purse strings to these. So those are going to be some conversations that unfortunately, I think might need to take place.
Thank you. Counselor Lindy, and then we have Dr. Perry on the line after that.
So we have one developer, the Foundry Project, that's going to give $200,000 to this town. And then we have a second developer that wants a huge tax break. When we were asking people for more money for taxes, that they rejected. I couldn't figure out how to balance those two things. I'm worried that if we create a TIF for one contractor, might as well line up the dominos. Okay? There's a project they're talking about across the street from a different developer. We can't give money away. We need to keep the money we have. I agree with Counsel McGrath on the revenue side, but the one thing that was said earlier, I'm not sure who said it, but we've got to be careful, I think, with Claremont, because that's an environmentally sensitive area. Once we lose that, we lose it. We can't get it back. So that's something I think we, as a council, need to talk about. I mean, they're building a lot of projects over there, or they want to. What are we getting about it? If they're over capacity, we can't even consider it. We, we kicked around here a little bit, and it didn't really go anyplace. Stopping development, having a building moratorium, that's pretty drastic. But if we don't have the water and sewer, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg, which comes first? But one developer, Foundry Project, $200,000, other developer, I don't want to pay money. Just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. And can we get Dr. Perry on the line?
He typed in his name.
Okay.
He supports getting the additional funds to the schools. Some savings can be found with operational budget on FY26. He is certainly in favor of the responsibility to practice using Asian funds for operations of the school, but we can still be confident for the power of our town schools' spending money. He can revisit possible passing of the funds next year, and then use some of this to use some stabilization initiative to help get the school on track for FY26. There is still a town of operation that is severely underfunded based on town and similar population to the tune of $20 to $40 million. We just don't have the funds needed for the schools and towns of our size.
Thanks. And Counsel Strickles.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what Counselor Kennedy was saying. I do think that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can't just talk about this issue with the schools and not address the glaring need for what people in town find as their biggest concerns, which is their water, which is the infrastructure. And people, albeit, they get blinded by the things that daily, that affect them on the day, on a daily basis. If they don't have children in the school system, that's not going to impact them. So I do think that it is a long-term conversation on how we get to the best possible solutions. But I do think that getting to a successful solution on any debt exclusion, because it would go up for the, for a vote, any major water or road infrastructure project that our town desperately needs, I think we need to start, I'm very big on a macro-micro scale. That is a macro problem for our town. Right now, we need to micro-focus on making sure that the schools have what they need based on what the school committee put forth and what our town needs to do. And I just still think that it is fiscally irresponsible to take out of a stabilization fund. I do think that for this year and this year alone, we have the tools to be able to dig in deep and find it in our general fund to ensure that we keep that rainy day fund as solid as possible in today's economy with changing costs. I just don't think that it's responsible, especially bringing in a new town manager who's going to have certain things that he has to tackle. Yes, he's great in the financial space, and I'm very excited about that. However, I don't want to be right back here a couple of years later with half of a fund, because we dipped into it once and it felt too easy. So I still feel that the general fund is the best way to go after this conversation.
Thank you. Any more comments from the councilors?
Are you going to sum us up here?
What's that?
Are you going to sum us up and talk about next steps?
Next steps?
Yeah.
Oh, so next steps would be, and then Blythe can kind of correct me here, is you've heard our sentiments and our comments, and we are awaiting, you know, what Mr. Casanova-Davis would kind of put forward with some recommendations, and then ultimately, the council will vote to ratify those recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes. So what I would say is, what I'm hearing the, the, the full council say is, you want to see the school budget supported. So with that in mind, it's the town manager's job under the charter to put forth a supplemental appropriation order?
Order or ordinance?
Be an order.
Order. And that will be his recommendation with his team about what adjustments he would make, because the budget's already set for this year, so it needs to be supplemented. Whether it is reductions, whether it's some use of stabilization will be up to him, and then the council can then take that up when it comes up. I would just tell you that there's going to be a pretty tight timeframe. We actually have 45 days for the day we got the notice, which was Friday, so I think that counts out to August 11th. But there's also a requirement for a publication in newspaper, so he's going to need to sit down and map that out with the team, you know, this week and figure out when you need to have meetings in order to have an order introduced, go to the committees, come back, and be able to meet that deadline by law.
Thank you. Yeah, we also need to remember, we need to work collaboratively with our partner town in, in Rainham, and not to speak for them, but I'm confident that they also have an appetite to get this done. And I believe that it'll be a joint effort, and I see this as a partnership between our town, Rainham, and the school committee to, to get this done for our students. And then, like I said, that our work on FY27, it begins shortly after, after this, so we cannot rest on our laurels and do this again next year. We'll have to see what the long-term sustainability of it is. And also encourage our councilors, and we'll do the, the hard work in budget and finance, but we all need to participate and see, you know, where we can potentially cut funds from our, our general budget. We're going to work collaboratively with the town manager and the finance office, but, you know, we need to make sure that we're being proactive about, about doing that, because ultimately, it does need to pass this body. And so we need to make sure that what is put forth before us is something that, you know, we are palatable to. So that's, it's going to be probably a busier July than we, than we thought we were going to have. We're going to have some special meetings for sure to make sure that we meet these guidelines for notice, like, like Ms. Robinson said, it does need to be noticed in the paper, and we do need to allow enough time for not only us to get our work done, but Rainham to get their work done as well. Counsel Lindy, you have one more comment?
Should we also consider meeting jointly with the board of selectmen in Rainham, based on what you just said?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to have those conversations of if we want to make that our budget working group, just continue that on, and then post it as a council meeting so that we could all kind of be there and have public comment. I don't want to speak for the school district. That was something that they set up. The Counsel Strickles and I participated in that throughout the spring, and I know that a number of you were there. So we could have that posted as a meeting if we decide to do that again, if, if such a conversation's, you know, necessary. But, yeah, we just need to make sure that we are kind of all working in alignment to make sure that Rainham has to have their selectman meeting, which is, I think, next week, and then they have to call a special town meeting to make sure that they, as a town meeting, are going to appropriate these funds. So a, a few things need to happen, but I'm confident that amongst everybody involved that we'll be able to get it done.
Thank you.
Okay? So I'm going to end discussion and then move on to legislation for action. So we have, first up, FY25-068, the United Steelworkers Bargaining Contract Ratification. So this was sent to the finance committee. They voted 5-0 to recommend at their June 22 meeting. Budget and finance met earlier today, and I'll defer to Counsel Murphy for an update.
Yeah, Budget and Finance voted 2-1 to recommend the contract as it stands now.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion for approval and then a discussion on this item.
So moved.
Counsel Strickles and Counsel Murphy, discussion? No discussion on the contract?
Well, there was discussion at Budget and Finance. I'm not a member of that committee, but there was discussion there that all of these step raises and COLAs amount to, correct me if I'm wrong, an 8% raise?
No. Could you explain how the steps and the COLA increases work?
So employees, because they had a, a contract in the past that ended in June 30th last year, that calls for step increases on a step plan, employees received those step increases in FY25, the year that's ending today, but they did not receive a cost of living adjustment. The step increase is 2.5% between steps. This COLA is 2% for the last fiscal year, the one that starts tomorrow and next year. So the total amount of all of these things put together amounts to what percent?
The COLA over three years is 6%, 222. The step increases, which haven't changed, and as long, I don't know how long there's been a contract with this union, but those have been 2.5% for a long time.
2%? Okay.
Yeah.
So we're talking about a three-year contract here and building in the 2% automatically every year, and the 2.5% automatically every year, which is why the contract as a whole is like a 6.5%, 7% raise? Well, 2 plus 2.5 is 4.5 per year. Right. So in FY25, the step increase had been already budgeted. The COLA is what would come in the following order after this one to, to take those monies from a one-time fund and put them in. In FY26, step increases and COLA have already been budgeted, so there's not an extra order to fund the upcoming fiscal year. Not an extra order, but still a raise, is that correct? That would be correct. That's okay.
Any further discussion from councilors? Yes?
I'll just make a quick comment. I actually supported this agreement as written. Part of the reason why I did that is because I, too, agree that the town needs to watch their percentage increase as our expenses are far outweighing our revenues. However, I support the good people we have in this town that deserve this 2% raise, and for folks that are just kind of following along. This is a lot of our department heads in the town that fall under this agreement, and I believe we have good people working in those positions that I want to keep competitive and keep in Bridgewater. I do agree that we should be more careful with our appropriations in the future, but I don't necessarily believe that the money or cost savings should happen through the contract agreements, but rather on the appropriation side, so that the entire picture can kind of be looked at. And so that's why I supported this contract as written and the people that fall under it. But I do believe that we need to, when it comes to FY27 and the planning that starts almost immediately now, think about the appropriations as a whole and how the town can save money on that end.
Thank you. Comments? Counsel Kenny? Oh, Ms. Robinson.
If I may add one more point that I think might be helpful to understand, the, the contract in its totality. The team negotiating this, you know, always looks towards what are things that can make it more cost-effective for the community long-term. Two things that happened this year. One was that the amount of vacation an employee could carry over has been limited to one week a year, less than it was, so that people aren't banking time and getting paid for at a higher amount at a later date. We want people to use their time and, you know, take appropriate time off, but we needed to balance what it costs the town long-term. And secondly, with this contract, the town had had a history in the past of, in order to continue to have the pay plan be competitive, they would lock, take off a lower step and add steps at the top. And so the longer employee stayed, they kept moving up. One of the things that happened in this contract is to stop that practice. It now stops at step 12, and once you're at step 12, you will not get another step increase in future years. That's what we consider to be the, the top step there is what that, those positions are worth in the marketplace today. And it's not about the person and the job, it's about the job, whether it's here or it's in a comparable town, that's what it's worth. So there were increases for seven employees in FY25 who are already at the top. So, there were increases for seven employees in FY '25 who are already at the top, one time, they only get it in '25, and then they will not have a step increase in '26. So, I think that's a significant change in the way we do it in order to, again, balance what's keeping us competitive and keeping good employees here, but not continuing to make it more expensive for the community over time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Kenny, do you have a comment?
Yep, through you, Mr. President, to the town manager. Just a couple, you just mentioned 12 steps, which is kind of one of the, pardon, one of my questions, are those yearly steps to get to 12, or are they chunked? Because I noticed in their vacation package, it is chunked in years, so is it?
It's yearly if they have an evaluation every year, so, and it depends on when, where somebody starts. If they start at step one, they have 12; if they start at step three, they have nine.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was, you know, your first three years is step one, second, okay, that answers that question. How many employees are in that unit?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Was there anything in relation to their health insurance that was adjusted or investigated at all, any changes that we could, any saves?
Good question. In this particular case, this union employees had already agreed to the higher amount that we're trying to get other employees up to, so that wasn't on the table this time.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from counselors?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also voted for this because there are department heads, and we don't want to lose them, but if we do have employment cuts, we want to make sure we have our department heads to run the short, if we have a short change, employees at our departments. So, this is why I agree to keep this raise.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm in budget and finance, I did vote against this, and just to explain my vote, I think that we need to do everything that we can on our side to be as fiscally responsible as possible, to keep expenses in line with 2.5% that we know is going to come year over year. I think that our department heads are wonderful, but this is a time where we really need to be looking at our budget and being as tight-gripped as possible, so that is why I voted no on this. I think that year over year, we need to really explore every cost savings that we have, and we see the school doing that, and they think that we do do that on our side. So, I just wanted to explain my vote, and with that, Debbie, can we do a roll call on this one, please?
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Ellenberg?
No.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
No.
Counsel Perry says yes?
Can you put him, is there a way to have him on his phone, just so his voice can be recorded, taking his voice?
Counsel Perry, are you hearing? Yes. Counsel Perry, are you hearing? Are you hearing?
You can say yes, I can say yes.
Yeah. You saying yes?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Hunt?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
Yes.
Five, three, S, three, no, wait, we can write?
Nine, six.
Six. Six, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, the next item that we'll move on to is paired with the previous, FY '25-069, United Steelworkers Collective Bargaining Appropriization Transfer. Budget and finance, sorry, the finance committee voted 5-0 to approve, to recommend at their 623 meeting, and Counsel Murphy, an update from budget and finance?
Budget and finance voted 2-1 in favor to recommend.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve and discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So, discussion, if we need to discuss this further, this is paired with the previous contract. This is essentially to appropriate the funds which would support the previous contract, which was now passed by the council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call, please, Debbie, on this one? Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 No.
Did we miss Counsel?
She's doing it now.
A little delayed. Yes. Okay, next one. Order FY '25-070, Non-Union Affiliated Positions Appropriization Transfer. Finance Committee voted 5-0 to recommend at their 623 meeting, and Counsel Murphy, again, update from budget and finance?
Same thing, budget and finance voted 2-1 to recommend.
Thank you. So, looking again for a motion for approval and then further discussion?
So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Hunt and Counsel Strickles. Discussion from counselors?
Could we defer to the town manager just for a quick update on what this is?
Yes.
So, this transfer in the town's history has been that for non-aligned employees who are not in unions who don't otherwise have a personal contract, that the increases for them follow whatever happens with the USW contract, so that's the one you just voted on and appropriated. So, these are the positions that are not in a union now. Some of them are department heads, some of them are confidential positions, and for instance, the executive assistant in town manager's office, the human resources director that can't be in a union and don't have a contract. These, like the USW contract, these are for COLA increases of 2%, the same amount for the last, for the fiscal year that ends today. FY '26 has already been budgeted in the budget for a 2% increase, similar to everybody else.
Thank you. Discussion from counselors?
I think this, just for me, just to reiterate again, I think there's good people working in this town that deserve a raise, however, I think we need to be smart with our finances and look at it on the appropriation side. So, instead of saying to one of these people in particular, you're not getting a raise, I hope that the council will come back later this year and say, this department is not getting a raise, in fact, you're getting a cut, so you'll need to work with it and figure out that. And so, again, my view is that the town needs to be wise about how they're spending, but I prefer to take the appropriations path than to make individuals suffer, and so I guess it's one or the other. But that's just my stance on this.
Noted. Other counselors, comments? So, again, just to explain my vote from budget and finance, kind of to be in line with the previous union contract, these are for non-union folks, that again, I want to see costs coming more in line with that 2.5% year-over-year increase, so that is why I voted no on this one, and again, I would encourage this council that we need to be looking at our budget with a very fine lens as we kind of move forward, so that we could get back to a place of, in my opinion, more sustainability. So, that is why I voted no, respectfully to my fellow counselors here, but we did have a great conversation about that, and I think that we will have a better path moving forward. So, Counsel Kenny, do you have another comment?
No, I appreciate your comments again, and I don't disagree with Counsel Murphy in the sense that we have valuable employees, we need to pay them. I'm just looking at the general fiscal situation that we're in and what the public's looking at, and I know that some of these are going to be more of a 2% versus a compounded step plus COLA, but just to keep it in line with that, I'm going to probably not support this as well for that same exact reason, unfortunately. I do wish we were in a better financial situation to support that, but unfortunately, we're not at the moment, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I supported this, not only are they department heads, but I don't think, I appreciate that their longevity, and because they go up in steps, I don't think they should be punished for it and taking money away, and if we do have cuts in this town, we need our department heads to hold the brunt up, because we don't know where we're getting our money from. But I think it's important to appreciate people who stay with us, and they have a knowledge, and that's worth a lot, so that's why I voted yes.
Thank you. Counsel Lindy?
I just wanted to thank our town manager and our finance department for being very careful and judicious with all of this. I think we've got to look at things in a completely different light going forward, but trying to keep everything to, you know, to 2.5%, I think it's responsible.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yep. With what Vice President McGrath mentioned, I agree with your sentiment, but we are spending more than what we can take in, and that experience is definitely valuable, but in the marketplace of what the current state of just, not just the town's economy, but the state's economy, in the concept of that kind of municipal free-market scenario where you can go other places or you can't, other towns are facing the same exact problems that we're facing right now, so I'm not entirely sure that there is a whole lot of, I don't want to see anybody leave by not getting a small percentage raise, but I don't think that we can be really giving raises out in this kind of environment that we're in at the moment, unfortunately.
Thank you. Any further comments? Yes?
I would like to see something more like a 1% raise rather than a 2% raise, but that would have to come later when the department started to make their cuts.
Yes. Any further comments? Yeah, and I already said this, and I said this in our budget and finance meeting earlier, you know, these employees, they are getting 2.5% steps with a 2% COLA, and as Town Manager Robinson said, it's effective 4.5% year-over-year, and for me, it's just a little bit too high. 1%, which would make it 3.5% year-over-year, in my opinion, is a little more sustainable. So, that's, again, what my position was earlier, and I just wanted to communicate that. Any further comments before we go to a roll call vote? Okay, Debbie, please?
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Ellenberg?
No.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Hunt?
Yes.
And Counsel Lindy?
Yes.
Counsel Perry? Can you hear her? Hold on.
Me, yes?
Yep, I got you.
Okay, next one. Order FY '25-072, Acceptance of Donation from the Oliari Charitable Foundation, Bridgewater Public Library. The finance committee voted 5-0 to recommend at their meeting, and Counsel Murphy, budget and finance, update, please?
No question about it, if it's a donation, we're voting 3-0.
Still take it. Okay, with that being said, a motion for approval, please, and discussion?
So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Strickles and Counsel Kennedy. Any discussion on receiving donation? Yes?
I just want to, once again, publicly express my thanks, and I think the council's thanks and Bridgewater's thanks to the Oliari Family Foundation for continuously supporting our town whenever they're asked to support, whether it's the library, whether it's Parks and Rec, they always show up, and they have been showing up for decades, so I just wanted to publicly thank them, and no donation is too small, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay?
Yeah, just the same, I just want to publicly express that, we appreciate that, it does make a difference, and, you know, I hope we can put this to good use, so thank you.
Agreed. Okay, no roll call on this one, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
I'm an aye, I'm sorry, I thought we had to do roll call regardless with one counselor.
You do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, then we'll go back to that roll call, please.
Out of sight, out of mind, huh?
Yeah.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
All right, let me put it on mute, and then I'll go back. All right, Counsel Perry said yes. Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Whoa, hold on. Sorry. He has a TV on, so if I have my volume on, then you can hear his TV. Counsel Ellenberg?
Yes.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
Yes.
Counsel Perry said yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Hunt?
Yes.
And Counsel Lindy?
Yes.
Nine of a, zero opposed.
Okay. Next one. Order FY '25-073, Town Clerk's Salary. So, the town council sets the salary for the town clerk. Budget and finance committee voted 5-0 to take no action, and they actually asked us to refer this back to them if we had any amendments, and so I will ask Counsel Murphy for an update from budget and finance, we discussed this at length during our meeting.
Budget and finance did amend the original number of 93 million, 93 million? Jeez. Let me start over. Budget and finance committee did amend the original order from $93,270.71 to $89,305.18, which would put the town clerk's salary on par with the other employees in the town for a near 2% raise, and the budget and finance committee voted 3-0 to recommend that number. We did have a lengthy conversation about that as well, too.
Yes, yes we did, and the finance committee also asked that we send some comparable numbers and salaries, to which we could do that, and we will send that over with our recommendation with the amendment, so a motion to refer and then discussion? Thank you.
You have to make a motion to amend.
Oh, we need to amend here, that's right. So, do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And all those in favor of the amendment, the?
Nope, nope, nope. Roll call.
Oh, this is not, sorry.
Sorry. Dr. Perry? It's a motion to amend the amount to $89,305.18.
Yes. So, do I have a motion to amend?
Sorry. Next time, I promise I will get, um, Dr. Perry. Turn your TV off, buddy. Dr. Perry? There you go. Okay, sorry, guys. All right. Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Ellenberg?
Yes.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
Yes.
Counsel Perry said yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Hunt?
Yes.
And Counsel Lindy?
Yes.
Nine of a, zero opposed.
Thank you for that, and so what we're looking for is a motion to refer back and then discussion?
Can I just ask a point of clarification? I'm still confused, because I asked this question in budget and finance, did the finance committee recommend no action or a no vote?
The notes that I received was that, could we suspend the rules to have?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. All those in favor, are we at the roll call that? Yeah.
Thanks.
You're killing me. I'm on vacation, you know.
I know. Your tan looks good.
Yeah. Dr. Perry, it's a motion to suspend the rules. Do you say yes? Motion to suspend the rules?
Yes.
He said yes. Sorry. Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Ellenberg?
Yes.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Counsel Loretty?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Hunt?
Yes.
And Counsel Lindy?
Yes.
Nine of a, zero opposed.
Mr. President, members of the council, M.J. Swoben, 5 LeShore Center, Unit 1128, Chair of the Finance Committee. The reason we voted to take no action was to have it come back to you folks for further consideration. I will read into the minutes, if you allow, the memo that I sent over to you folks.
Sure.
Specifying this. In a memo dated from June 23rd, 2025, to Council President Johnny Loretty, copied to the town manager, Blythe Robinson, regarding Financial Committee Action on Order OFY '25-073, Town Clerk Salary. Dear Mr. President, at the recent meeting of the Bridgewater Financial Committee, FinCom, the membership voted to take no action on the above-mentioned measure. However, the vote, oh, thank you, yeah, thank you, Blythe. However, the vote to take no action is hereby accompanied by the committee's desire to see the town council take into further consideration the legislation's monetary stipulation with additional data inclusive of the following. Number one, comparable salaries of town-city clerks in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Two, populations of town-cities used in comparison for item number one. Item number three, compensation policy structures of the comparable town-city, i.e. town clerk reserves the right to seek salary increase, or town council proposes salary increases, reserves the right to seek salary increase, or town council proposes salary increases, or salary is tied to the equivalent of other appointed elected officials. It is the committee's sincere hope that with the recent override elections' outcome in mind, the town council will have a more fulsome conversation regarding the town clerk's salary and seek to put Order OFY 25-073 before us again for a final vote. If you or the members of the town council have any questions, I can be available at your earliest convenience to discuss the matter further. Signed, Michaela Jessie Spigot, Chairwoman, Financial Committee.
Thank you.
I watched the meeting, and it looked like it was a 5-0 vote to reject it, so...
It was unclear to me as well, but it seems like we have some clarification here.
Okay.
Yeah, rules are still suspended. Yeah.
The reason why we took no action was in the hopes that it would be referred back to the town council. That is how it was explained to us in the meeting at the time, which is why the committee voted in favor to have it referred back to the town council for further consideration. It was explained to us that a vote to take no action basically summarily send it back to you folks for further action and work.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we don't have a motion yet on the table, so can we get a motion for approval and discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just one more comment, just to, I guess, answer the Finance Committee's request. We did discuss, and you did share with us some comparable data. I think it was our understanding of Budget and Finance, it's very hard to find a town that has a Bridgewater-sized budget with a town that has the same comparable population of Bridgewater. There's a big gap there in between those towns with that population typically have much higher budgets. And so a few of the ones that were mentioned, you know, were Middleborough at $113 million budget, Stoughton $130 million. Those have comparable, maybe even slightly more, population, but the budget doesn't correlate with that completely. And so instead of going that route, which we did talk about in the Finance Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we decided to keep the town clerk in line with other employees at the 2%. So that's sort of how we came to that conclusion of the $89,000 roughly, just for background there as well, too.
Thank you. And, yeah, so we'll, again, if it's the will of the council, refer this to the Financial Committee, and it will come back to us for a final vote. And it could be amended between now and then as well. So any further discussion?
Just a thank you for clarifying that, because that answered pretty much every question I had. Thank you.
We were diligent in our discussions earlier. If we don't have any further discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Let me just get Councilor Perry.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Lindy?
Yes.
Councilor Hunt?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Loretty?
Yes.
Councilor McGrath?
Yes.
Councilor Strigels?
Yes.
Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. Our last item tonight, before we, of course, move on to citizen comment, is Resolution R.FY 25-014, a resolution requesting an independent operational and financial review of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. So this was put forward by myself. Just flipping through over here. As we discussed at length earlier, what we heard from a lot of residents and was echoed by some citizens tonight, that we really need to get a very firm understanding of our finances on both the town side and the school side. And people would like to see a third party, an outside set of eyes, to do some of that work. And I would, you know, wholeheartedly agree with that. Whatever we could do to rebuild some of the trust that our residents have in our local government, I think that we should do. I think that is an opportunity for the school district to hopefully uncover if there is any opportunity for improvement. And if there isn't, then even more of a justification for us to go back with another ask for potential override. So I see it only as a win-win, honestly, so that we can rebuild trust and so that we can, if the situation presents itself, ask for additional revenue in the form of an override in the future. So I would like to put this forth in front of the council. Tonight, it's the first reading, so we would be leaving this at the council level. So do I have a motion to keep this at the council level? And then, of course, further discussion?
So moved.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilor Kennedy. Discussion on this item? Yes.
Again, I looked at, if you read the independent audit report that the town did in 2024, they say that if we want to see the audit, because they had to audit the school, too, because it's part of our budget, we can request that right from Mr. Powers. It says it in the audits report. So we would get 2024. If they don't do 2025, at least we can look at 2024, because they were included, because they're part of us.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I think my biggest concern is the school committee just put forth a budget that is slim pickings. It's not a level-funded budget by any stretch of the imagination, and it's what I believe the consensus feels doesn't do enough for the students. And unless I know kind of who's paying for this, it's hard for me to support and justify the number that they put forth and having this then become a number that the district then has to carry. So I'm just trying to figure out if we're paying for it via the towns and because it's something that the towns are asking for, or if it's something that we would then be asking the district to fund.
Thank you.
I had the same question. Are we going to pay for it? Are we asking for it here, and we're going to pay for it? Are we asking the district to pay for it? So I just want to...
I can't speak to that. I imagine that the schools, if the school committee... So this is a resolution to send a letter to the school committee asking them to commission a third-party financial and operational review. I want to be clear with that language. This is not an audit. It's not a forensic audit. It is an operational and financial review of how the district runs to see if there's any inefficiencies and opportunities for cost savings and ways to improve upon the operations. So this would be us asking them to commission that. I did have some very, very preliminary conversations of work that was done in another town in Massachusetts, and that bill ran somewhere around like $50,000 to $60,000. Again, that was a different town, not our town, very preliminary conversation, but I just wanted to kind of float that out there, that this is not in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least the scope of that investigation. This would obviously be unique to our district.
I think, just to follow up on that, and I agree with the fellow councillors, that the cost of this is a concern for me, and where that money's going to come from, if the expectation is the school committee or the town. I do believe that something like this could benefit ultimately in the long run, but I have concerns that paying, if one town was 50, 60 grand in a district, can we expect that to double? And if so, if it's a $100,000 cost, or even a $50,000, $60,000 cost, are we going to get that back plus some in the results of that audit, I think, or whatever we're calling it, review? I think would be really important for me to know. So if, I don't know how you do this, but if you could demonstrate to me that a review like this would give back triple, double the cost that we pay for it, I think it would be exceptionally beneficial, but I struggle with that. I also struggle with, and I think this is a very fine line, and I don't know if Attorney Rollins can weigh in, but it's only a resolution, so there's no action behind it, but asking another elected body, or any body within the town that we don't have direct purview over, seems like we're walking a really fine line with that. And I think, you know, I wouldn't want to see the school committee come back with their own resolution and say, fix the water in town, because you're impacting our schools, right? Like, that's a very obvious issue that we need to address, that's in our lane. This doesn't seem like something that's in our lane. There are elected officials, too, who should, maybe, would be my opinion, they should do something like this, but I have a hard time with the town council dictating or even supporting something along these lines coming from us as a body. So I guess that's where I stand with it. I would reject it for the cost-benefit analysis that we don't have and for us kind of asking another body to do something, which I think is, again, a little controversial in itself.
One comment, then, of course, Councilor Lindy, is we just did that by sending them a letter, asking the school committee to honor the results of the override. And it is just a resolution. It bears no weight, so it just expresses our, if it is the will of us, our interest into doing an independent review. So I came up with this. I, of course, stand by it, and I would, you know, urge you to consider that option, because we just did that, and we imposed our opinions on another body. But, oh, get it.
Just as a quick follow-up, I actually voted against that. That's the one councillor voted against that resolution, too.
Stand corrected.
For the same reason, is that I think dictating to another body that we don't, again, have direct purview over seems almost like a legal issue, although I'm not asking. It just seems, it seems very questionable. And again, I think the intention is great, and I think you've come up with a solution here to save the town money. So I want to respect that, and I think that the idea would be beneficial. And when I attended the school committee meeting last week, one school committee member actually spoke out and said they would support something like this. So I think, again, I support something like this. I don't know the cost-benefit analysis, and I have a problem with it coming from us to that body. So that's why I will vote no.
Sounds good. Councilor Lindy?
So I think there could be a cost sharing among the three entities. If it's $60,000, 2020, 20, sounds a little bit more manageable. Also, I wonder if it's in the, I believe it might be in the state auditor's purview if the council wants to go that route. And I don't know if there is a cost associated with that or not.
Did you have a comment, Councilor Hunt?
I was basically going to say all the same things, only I wasn't thinking of the auditor yet, so that's good.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilor Strigels?
I'm just curious. In your preparation of putting this together for our meeting and for us to potentially consider, did you have any conversations preliminary? I know you had conversations with another town to kind of establish a baseline. Did you have any preliminary conversations as to whether or not there would be an appetite in Rainham to participate in something like this, similar to the previous school committee letter?
Yes, they were, they did have an appetite for this. They were in favor. Not to speak for, seek for them, but the feedback I got was positive. Did you have a comment, Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah. I agree, generally speaking, with Councilor Murphy's opinion in keeping the committees and elected officials, their bodies separate. Unfortunately, the way this does work is we are kind of intertwined when it comes to budgetary issues and things like that. So I think asking them to do this when we will be the ones later on down the road asking for an override scenario to pay for their budget, I do think there's kind of, it does kind of cross over on something like this, from where I stand. I do agree with this. I think it's something that's needed. I did also, I was contacted by a committee member, the school committee, a school committee member that was in support of something like this, having seen what another town has done in the finances that they were able to recoup. It's not a direct comparison, and we may not see anything at all. But at the end of the day, we can go to the voters and say, we, this was done, the school committee can go to the voters and say this was done as a, at a minimum, as a confidence building. And I also find it concerning, too, that, you know, we've had a couple of teachers in here tonight at the citizen comment already telling us that what we were told is inaccurate. We were told we will be in compliance, and now we are being told by teachers that we are not going to be in compliance. That's very, very concerning, especially when it comes to the children with disabilities, because their compliance is legislated at a microscopic level compared to the most students. So if we are going to go into this, kind of being told that this isn't right, we have another committee member, or two, on the school committee that maybe this might be something that they have an appetite for. I think it's just more of a vote of confidence and maybe something that we can manage with them at a later date, if it is a cost issue, something that will have to be worked out with the individual company, if this gets to that point, is something that I would definitely be interested in working with to make sure that we can do something like this. I think this is what people want to see and what they're asking for, and I do think that this is a positive step if we go in this direction.
Thank you. Any further comment before we vote to keep this at the council level? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Perry?
Uh, yes, to keep it at a council level.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes.
Councilor Strigels?
Yes.
Councilor McGrath?
Yes.
Councilor Loretty?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Hunt?
Yes.
And Councilor Lindy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. We are now going to move on to our citizen comment period. Again, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may come up to comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please just state your name and address for the record.
I ask you to give me some grace. My mind's a little confused. Lynette Delano Chase, Old Farm Road. First, I want to speak to the schools. As a former school nurse, I echo Mr. Kennedy's sentiments and the person who spoke on safety. You are decimating the nurse's office. The nurse's office is a safe place for a lot of students, whether it's someone with disability who needs a medical intervention, or a student who needs a social intervention, or just a break. You have, this budget that I saw left, I think, took out one-third of the nurses, and that's just not safe. I can't speak to the disabilities or any of that, but I'm going to agree with what Mr. Kennedy has to say. As far as Claremont goes, it is a really slippery slope out there. It's an environmentally safe area. Having dealt with five years, as Jason can attest to, someone trying to build a solar farm in my backyard, we fought them for five years. Claremont has been around for that long, taking over all of that property out there. The nip is, the nip is the nip, and it needs to be left alone. There shouldn't be a restaurant across the street. There shouldn't be any of that. It just, it's a slippery slope, and I think you need to really pay attention to that company. As far as what the TIF and all that, to me, it's apples and oranges. Somebody bought property that is set vacant for, I think, 20 years or thereabouts, and they're trying to do something positive with it. I can't speak to the tax implications, because I don't know. But you had two people that were nominated today. There was a charter objection, I'm not sure why, but one, as Ms. McGrath said, you need quality, you need quality people that are experienced. And then you had a planning board member. I don't know why they were rejected or what it means, because I missed that part of the conversation, but I just hope it's not going to be like 86 Main Street, where we just kicked it down the road for months upon months upon months. And then when we had the town manager's ad hoc committee, we kicked it down months upon months upon months. It's time that we all come together, work together, and do something positive for this town. Thank you. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I have to be at work at 7:00 tomorrow morning, so I'm going home and showering and going to bed, so I wish you well. Thank you very much for all that you have done for the town, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's a tough act to follow. Counselors, good evening. Good to see you all again. Hard to believe it's been a couple of months. I would like to offer a few comments just with respect to not an issue, any such issue that you've discussed this evening, but process. And first, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank you for having considered the appointment of persons to the ad hoc TIF committee. That is, I'd like to, but I can't thank you because you didn't do that this evening. You did not choose to embark upon that particular discussion. And frankly, it's relatively inconsequential, whether you consider tonight the appointment of myself or anyone else to an ad hoc committee. It's actually relatively inconsequential, in my view, whether or not an ad hoc committee for that purpose exists. Because ultimately, you nine people have the power to authorize the town to enter into any such TIF agreement if and when one is actually drafted and proposed to you. But process is critical. And I'm speaking, of course, with respect to the use of the charter objection. Now, frankly, a charter objection properly is invoked by a counselor when there's some risk that the council is perhaps poised to embark on some type of action by means of your vote, which could violate the charter or could, for that matter, violate some other law. And so it's a bit of a circuit breaker. It's not intended as a mechanism to simply delay a vote or for a counselor who is just adamantly opposed to some measure to put at least a temporary stop to it. It's not intended for any of those purposes. Now, during six of the seven years during which I sat in one of those seats, there had only been, actually, I take that back. There was, in my seven years, there was only one council, one instance where a charter objection was, in fact, invoked. Prior to that, to the best of my recollection and knowledge, it was closer to 10 years ago that the most, that the previous instance of a charter objection had been invoked. However, in the last nine months, including tonight, there had been three. Now, sometimes it is not especially consequential when a charter objection is raised, because ultimately, typically, the issue is going to resume again at the very next scheduled council meeting. But in the spring, we did have the experience on the council of a charter objection raised, which had a very significant consequence. It actually deprived the citizens of Bridgewater of the opportunity to partake in a hearing, a public hearing, on the matter of our annual town budget. And so because of that, our town budget was simply adopted without action. It simply took effect as it was proposed. I think it's very dangerous, and about nine months ago, when this actually, when a previous example arose of a charter objection, I made the point to all of you that I thought it was a dangerous precedent, because it might lead to a situation where we're simply lobbing at one another charter objections just to throw a wrench into the works. And that's really the, what I see happening, or certainly is the potential for that to continue to happen. And I'd like to just urge you to pay serious attention to the proper use of a charter objection and when a charter objection is not properly invoked. It's your decision. It's your council. But frankly, it often has the impact of depriving citizens of the proper execution of the legislative function to which you've been charged. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. James Walsh, 60 Crescent Street. I just had a question that I was hoping could get answered at the next council meeting, which is, what is the number of housing units we can build before we're out of compliance with Chapter 40B? For those who remember several years ago, Chapter 40B requires that 10% of our housing units are affordable. And when we're out of compliance, developers are able to completely or almost completely bypass local zoning. So some of the, some of the most resource-intensive developments in town were made because they, we weren't able to object to water use, to density, to height, to anything like that. So I think, you know, there's going to be a lot of pressure. We've talked about the NIP. We've talked about ADUs in the past that could add, you know, hundreds of houses without any sort of special permit. I think we need a really clear number of how many more units we can build before we're suddenly giving away local control. And I think we should be checking that, you know, periodically throughout the year to make sure that we're keeping our affordable housing at the right level to balance that out. So I'd love to get a little bit of clarity there on how many more we can build. I know Claremont has also come up a lot. There was an excellent presentation that Counsel Moore did several years ago about the PDD and how that is one of the last areas in town where we have any sort of place to build commercial development. I'm not saying I'm for it, but I know that commercial tax base is something we consistently talk about. And every time we allow them to bypass it and build residential, we lose some of that acreage. So I think we're at a really critical point in time where we need to be thinking about that, and I hope a first step will kind of figure out where we are and how much more we can build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Ramandetta, 317 Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. I just wanted to make a couple of recommendations, and you had mentioned Eric Moore's presentation on the planned development district, which was excellent. And it tells you a little bit about what the planned development district was thought of. That's what it was going, what the town had hoped it would be. And it also tells you a little bit about what it has become with many residential units. The other thing I would like to recommend is that you take a look at MassMapper. It's a great tool. And take a look at Lake Nippinickett. And take a look at the physical features that are connected to it. There are three streams on the Lake Shore Center property that are fed by wetlands that go under 104 and feed into Lake Nippinickett, which then connects to the Town River and the Taunton River. So if there are issues with those streams, with those wetlands, if land continues to be taken up for development, what do we have left? So please take a look at MassMapper. And I'd like to thank Counsel Lindy for mentioning the overdevelopment and the environmental factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey Rodriguez, 45 Jeans Way. I just wanted to respond to the discussion around, I think it was called the operational overview or review. If it can build trust in the town, great, in the school district, great. If it can uncover some inefficiency or free up some money, even better. But I am wary of the implication that the school district is in this position because of mismanagement or poor spending. You know, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we are here from chronic, chronic underfunding of the school district. And I just also wanted to ask if we would be doing similar undertakings for other town services and other town departments. And just remind you that by and large, the people I spoke to did not voice mistrust in the school district. They voted, they voiced mistrust at the town level. So I think to only focus on the school district is extremely short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Eric Hoy, 120 Oak Ridge Lane. I just wanted to comment something similar to what Mrs. Rodriguez just said about the independent operational and financial audit for the school district. I'm a big fan of transparency. I support something like that in any town department. One thing that I do want to comment on, because it seems to just be the hub where many of us get our information today, and people are very quick to accept things without figuring out what the sources of where the information comes from. But throughout that override process, there was so much heat and so much dissent put on, people use the term "teachers," when in fact they're talking about Unit A in the school district, which is teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, school psychologists. It incorporates many than just that blanket term, "teachers." And the reason that I bring this up is just because in terms of transparency, we talked a lot about union contracts tonight. All of the union contracts for the school district have been available on the website for some years and for some time. Any MOAs, any MOUs that come up, I don't see that kind of transparency in all town departments. I have, in the past, done a request when I was an association leader for the school district for those contracts for other town departments, specifically police and fire. I really had to jump through hoops to get them. I just wonder why some town departments have to follow certain protocols for transparency, but that doesn't seem to apply to all town departments. So hopefully, that's something we can work together so that that information is readily available, because I think in the, in the term of, the term that was used tonight, "building trust," that goes a long way in terms of building trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Hanson Pleasant Street. A couple of the people took all my, they must have been reading my notes. But I just wanted to bring up about the Claremont thing again. I think some may have misunderstood, you know, when we brought it up, it was to protect Claremont, to show what damage is being done, can be done, has the potential to be done. It wasn't meant to bring up that, you know, here's a place that can develop things, know how to spend their money, do things. It was meant to show that it's an area of environmental concern. There should be, it's period. It is an AC/EC, period. It needs to be protected, period. There, so many things have changed down there that people aren't being aware, and they're stretching and stretching what they want to do. They want to still put that restaurant in that we, they, a few years back, they kept trying, and it doesn't fit. It's not going to fit in a square peg. It's not going to fit in a round hole. And as nothing's changed, they want to try to change that PDD. And they keep pushing, 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 hoping people give up. I'm not giving up, and several of us are not giving up, and we would appreciate other people paying attention. I appreciate Counsel Lindy's comments. It needs to be protected. And somebody mentioned about, well, maybe if they can pay to put a well. Having them pay for a well should not give them a green light to do whatever they want down there. And that's what I'm concerned. It's, you know, oh, if you do this, we'll do that for you. No, you can't do that in this area. So this will be probably coming up some more, but it is a PDD area. You have to be concerned. So, and the other thing is, I do hope the TIF doesn't go through. And I, there has been talk about maybe doing another override, and it would be nice if somebody could say, is there a timeframe before another override can come? Like, is there years, or could it be tomorrow? You know, how soon would that be considered or be allowed to be considered? I think that would be nice to know. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Gina Gasconi, Ball Avenue. Just to address the funding of the school budget, which I agree with many counselors, it's not enough, but that the school department presented. I would like to see the stabilization funds used rather than department funds. Will it set a precedent? Maybe. But I think it's something that has to be done. Town departments are, many are at their bare, bare bottom for funding. As the Parks and Rec Commissioner, I can speak for the Parks and Rec Department, which has been at bare bottom for years. I don't see how they can absorb another cut. The Light Earth is already looking, excuse me, not being open enough hours that the state requires. So there are departments that, other departments that could be cut, maybe. I can't speak for all departments. But I think we should look at taking, you should look at taking stabilization funding rather than cutting departments right now. As far as Claremont is concerned, I think it's an environmental issue. It has been probably since their first building, and it just grows more. And based on the information that Ms. Ramandetta presented, specifically about water and sewer, I think that's a deal breaker right there to approve for them. Thank you. I'd like to thank Blaise for all her work and wish you well in whatever brings you next. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you very much. So we will now wrap up with council comments. Debbie Dariast, does Dr. Perry have any? He's gone? Okay. I'll start with Counsel Lindy, then.
So first of all, I just want to thank outgoing town manager, Blaise Robinson. Have a wonderful vacation. I think you steered the ship through rocky waters and luckily didn't hit any icebergs. We've got a lot of icebergs to avoid going forward. I'm glad we are looking for more information, budgetary and finance. I think hopefully we'll be meeting with the school department every month or every quarter at least, and all staying on the same page going forward for this fiscal year. I don't think audits are a problem. I don't, I think it's worth the money that we would spend. And maybe we should do it on both sides of the ledger. I mean, I think, as Gina said, some departments are really lean and mean and don't have a lot of money to go through, and other departments, I mean, everything's going up. We all know, God help us if we do another building project with tariffs coming forward. We're lucky we did what we did with our fire station. I'm glad that when I suggested at a previous meeting to find some money for the Fourth of July, that we actually did find money for the Fourth of July. I think, you know, we can't foot the whole bill, but to foot a portion of it to show good faith and due diligence from the town, I think it's one of the special things about the town of Bridgewater. I also just want to, and I'll continue to go on record, just like Johnny, you've gone on record with your thoughts. I do not think it's fiscally irresponsible to tap a stabilization fund for one year. I think it's a temporary solution. I don't necessarily think it's a precedent. I don't know what the stabilization fund is for if we don't use it when we have a problem. So I want to explore, like I said before, multiple options. Not, maybe part of it is cuts and maybe part of it is stabilization fund. And I wore my Fourth of July shirt to express support. Hopefully, we'll all be in the parade, and we'll have a great time. I also know they need help the day after, because they don't have the people to clean up like they do, and they put out a Facebook interested group to click. I'll be there the next day. Hopefully, it won't be a terrible mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hunt?
Yes, thank you. I have a few notes here, if I can read my scribbles. I wanted to say that there was a great celebration for Juneteenth down at the university park that we've never used before, I think, for that sort of a thing. And it was fun. I arrived a little late, got there in time to watch the African drummers drumming away and the Mandela Fellows starting to dance away, so that was fun. And then the next day was the recognition at the fire department for the firefighters, the 10-year firefighters, the 15-year firefighters, and the 30-year firefighter, Captain Thomas Lockman Jr., and the recognition of, if I can read, Glenn Grafton, Chief, Deputy Chief Glenn Grafton, who was recognized by the state as firefighter of the year. So, let's see. You asked about marching. And I think the only other thing I want to say is to respond to former Counselor Chase and say that I had absolute reason for doing a charter objection. And my reason was that I wanted the new town manager, who starts tomorrow, to be the appointee of the people going to be on that committee. And that one of the people on there had a potential, is already serving on another town committee. So he would have to have approval by the town manager to be serving on a second town committee. And I just wanted our new town manager, who starts tomorrow, to have the advantage of doing that and appointing his own people to a committee he's going to have to be working quite a bit with. So that's what it was.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, just keep it short and sweet. Mr. Robinson, thank you again for your service to the town. I know we've already thanked you a few times, but again, can't thank you enough for the work that you've done over the last almost year. Also, thank you to the Fourth of July Committee for their commitment. I attended several of their events last week, and it's great to see them at present at all these different restaurants and at the brewery in town. They put in so much work. So really happy that the town could help them out this evening and continue that great event that they do. I know the work will start on July 5th for next year, and so we'll just encourage folks that if and when you can, give, please do to that group. They do an incredible job, and they give a lot of family time and personal time to do it. Everybody gets to enjoy on the Fourth here. And I think that, that's it for me.
Thank you. Counsel Strickles?
Thank you so much. I wanted to personally thank everyone who came and spoke tonight, and especially everyone who attended. When it's a special meeting, especially when a meeting is rescheduled, you never know who will be able to show up and who will stay till the very end to hear the things that we have to say. So I do encourage you to continue to attend and participate in our legislative process, because when we hear your voices, that makes us more powerful as counselors. I also wanted to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe Fourth of July. And I do encourage everyone to attend our town parade, fireworks, and while you are in town, to support all of the local businesses that may remain open. It's not just about enjoying the parade and enjoying the fireworks later and the concessions, but any small business that stays open and needs the foot traffic, it's a great time to support businesses. to support businesses that otherwise you might not get to support. And I do want to thank Councilor Murphy, the work of the town manager's office, Lori Guarini, for finding additional funds, because I do know, as a very small but mighty committee, they are humble in their work, but I saw the daunting nature of the task that they have very graciously done for years for our town. And I also just want to thank them for our little tidbit that they gave us. That was very sweet. And finally, I always thank you, and I thanked you directly, but I do just want to thank Town Manager Robinson for your service and commitment to our town. I didn't really get a whole lot of time to work with former Town Manager Dutton. So for me, you are my first town manager that I got to pick up the phone and call, shoot an email over to get an answer, and I really do think that the residents of our town have gotten a really good grasp of how valuable you have been for the last year, not only to the residents, not only to this building, but to all of us as counselors. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. And Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes, I'd also like to thank Town Manager Robinson. And you actually did good work bringing us to our bond rating, improving our bond rating, and thus our stabilization fund and so forth, so we even have something to talk about whether we should take it or not. So I am in favor of audits or reviews, and I think that we should do the school and the town at appropriate departments as necessary. One thing, for example, in the school, they have a very expensive health plan for their employees, and Plymouth County has another plan which is with the Mayflower and is significantly cheaper. So I think cost savings can be found in a lot of different places. I want to thank the Fourth of July Committee for everything that they do, and yes, I will be enjoying the parade and all the festivities. And I want to thank Fire for Effect and the farmer's market that went on this past weekend, and just everyone who shows up. Your commitment is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Kennedy?
I also want to extend my thanks to Ms. Robinson, especially over the last few months. It's been a lot, and thank you for doing all of the work that you've done. Also, as a new counselor, thank you for your introduction into town government. I appreciate that. I also want to extend thanks to the Fourth of July Committee. They put on a great show. I'm going to be there with my family. I look forward to seeing all you there as well, and it's going to be a good time. So, you know, they did a great job finding that money as well from the town to help support that effort. That is a growing cost, and that cost will only grow next year, so everything that everyone's been doing for the last couple of months to support that and going to businesses locally, local business support has been huge. So thank you to all of them. I also want to thank my fellow counselors tonight. We had a fantastic discussion, in my opinion, whether or not we agree. We had a good debate, and I believe it was truly productive, which is the whole purpose of what we're doing here. So thank you all for participating in that. I also want to thank the citizens for coming out as well. This doesn't work without all of you, and, you know, thank you guys for coming out here tonight, so.
Thank you. And Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I presented the proclamation to James Beatty, who retired after eighteen years on behalf of the town council at the fire department. I do have Fourth of July t-shirt, and I'm ready for cleanup, but I don't know what time it starts and if we need garbage bags. And just to clear, I wasn't promoting Claremont to build. I was just comparing how they look to get revenue compared to what our town gets revenue, and we should look the same way that they do and take opportunities. So I'm not supporting, I want to protect the NIP, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. As for myself, again, thank you, Mrs. Robinson. It's been a pleasure working with you. Appreciate, especially being available at all times. It doesn't go unnoticed. And thank you, Melissa, and my fellow NIP neighbors. I don't know if you guys know, but I do live on the lake with my wife and now my daughter. And we, that's what brought us to this town, was the NIP and the serenity there, and I hope to do everything that we can within our right and within our power to protect it. So you have me, you know, advocating for that. Thank you to my counselors and fellow residents who came to a special meeting. It's hard to get out here, especially during the summer. And as Councilor Kennedy said, we had a great discussion. I think that this is going to be the foundation that we could build further discussions throughout the summer as we continue to forge a stronger partnership with the schools and with the town of Rainham as we look forward not only to solving our budget issues this year, but, you know, years moving forward. I'm looking forward to engaging with you all and our new town manager, who begins tomorrow. You know, don't go on too many long vacations this July. We have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to doing it with you all here. So that's all that I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And all those, oh, wait, are we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1762.47]